We ask you to please rise if you're able for the prayer and worship allegiance before we convene the Commissioners' public meetings. Herein, Father, we ask you to establish the work that you have for us to do to our finite days of life, and we ask you to, we pray that we are purposely, we bring glory to you. Father, on Monday, we're going to celebrate the United States Coast Guard's birthday. Since 1790, the Coast Guard has kept the nation's waterways safe. They have protected us from drugs, human trafficking, and terrorism. The forty-four thousand five hundred active current members of the U.S. Coast Guard are on alert. Twenty-four seven, we thank them, and we ask for your protection that only you could provide. And, Lord, we're thankful that we live in a land of freedoms. Each generation knows it's paid for with a price. Never take it for granted. May you bless our meeting this morning and our beautiful valley that you've created. In these things, we humbly pray in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to its standards, one nation, united, indivisible, infinite, eternal.
Good morning, everyone. We have a full house today. For a good reason, as we're going to honor a special retiree, so. And we're looking forward to that, that time, so. This time, we'll convene the Commissioners' public meeting and ask for approval of minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll make the motion.
All say. All favor side?
Aye.
We may public comment on agenda items only at this time. This will be only on agenda items. Anything online?
Nothing online.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to a citation of recognition, and Commissioner Sorban's going to read that on behalf of the Commissioners.
Thank you. The certificate of recognition for Michael McMunn. Whereas in June of 2019, following a long distinguishing career in human resources and public service roles, Mike McMunn came out of retirement to serve his fellow veterans as a Director of Veterans Affairs for Lycoming County, helping veterans and their families navigate critical benefits, entitlements, support services with compassion and dedication. And whereas, as a U.S. Army captain during the Vietnam War, Mike served as an advisor with the Military Assistance Command, living among and training South Vietnamese troops, learning their language and their culture, and earning their respect and trust. And whereas, he has continued to advocate for the Vietnam veterans affected by Agent Orange exposure, and acknowledges and parallels and long-lasting effects still left by the Vietnam people. And whereas, Mike was instrumental in establishing the Veterans Court Mentor Program, initially serving as the sole mentor, and growing the program into a thriving support network of five veteran mentors through his presence, empathy, and leadership. And whereas, Mike has served as commander of a local veterans post where he's played a leading role in bringing the Moving Wall, a traveling replica of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial to Lycoming County in the 1990s, providing a powerful opportunity for community reembracement and healing. And whereas, Mike has been actively involved with the Lycoming County Veterans Memorial Park since its inception, contributing to it, its vision, its development over the years, and was a key figure in the 2023 dedication of the Purple Heart Monument. He has also played a vital role in the successful effort to formally designate both Lycoming County as a Purple Heart County and the City of Williamsburg as a Purple Heart City, honoring the sacrifices of all who have been wounded or killed in the service of the United States. And whereas, beyond his role with the county, Mike remains an active, engaged military, history research, and local veterans initiatives, demonstrating a lifelong dedication to honoring and preserving the legacy of service as well as a regular traveling to Washington, D.C., where he takes part in ceremonies reading the names of the fallen from the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Wall, ensuring their legacies live on. He is also a devoted family man with deep personal values, commitment to his family. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the Board of Commissioners for the County of Lycoming, offer its deepest appreciation for Mike's ongoing dedication, warm congratulations upon his well-deserved retirement, and express great gratitude for his exceptional service and the commitment that he has given to all the veterans and their families over the years. Mike, may you never underestimate the difference you make and how truly appreciated you are by so many. Signed, Lycoming County Commissioner Scott Metzger, Chair, Mark Sorban, Vice Chair, and Mark Massey, the Secretary. Thank you.
Mike, before you speak, would anybody like to speak regards to Mike? Welcome to say a few words. Judge Butts, would you please call the podium? Thank you.
I just wanted to say a few words. Mike has been unofficially associated with treatment courts since before 2010, when he came to court and basically said, "You've got to probably have some veterans here that I can help with," and that's when he began working with us. Totally out of the blue, an amazing individual who saw that there probably was a need and wanted to fill it because he knew the experiences he had and what he had done to some of the people that he had worked with. And then he was very instrumental in helping us plan and create Veterans Court here in Lycoming County starting in 2019. And I can't express my gratitude enough for all the changes that he's made and all the difference he has made with the veterans. We've had a couple of individuals that we really didn't know how to, how to reach, and his connection with them, and Dave Bauer and the Veterans Justice Outreach Coordinator who's here too, Lori. They just work together as a great team, and, and it makes our county all the better for it. So I just wanted to say thank you so much for everything that you have contributed. We've gone to national conferences together, and you've just been so excited about the things that you learn, that you want to bring back to the county, and that's what makes our program so great, too. So congratulations. I'm sure you'll still be around, but on your retirement here today.
Thank you, Judge. I represent the ham. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Commissioners. And, Mike, I had to be here to say thank you. First of all, thank you for your service in Vietnam. Thank you for your service to our country. I sat with Mike last Saturday evening at the Korean War Veterans Banquet commemorating seventy-five years of the start of the Korean conflict. And Mike said to me at that dinner, he says, "You know, I really wish I could have started this job forty-two years ago." That shows you the kind of man Mike is. Mike has done so much for our veterans here in Lycoming County, not just as the head of our Veterans Affairs, but our Vet's Council. He's been instrumental in so many things for our veterans, as the judge just shared. Mike, we can't thank you enough for your service, not just to our country, but to our community, to our veterans. And we wish you well on your retirement, and we know you won't be a stranger. We know you'll be around, and we look forward to seeing you around. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. And I believe Senator Yaw, Representative Mike White, or Matt Wise is here. Matt? Thanks for being here.
Good morning, everyone. Mike, congratulations. I'm sorry Senator Yaw couldn't be here. He's out of town today, but he sends his best wishes to, you know, personally, I have to say that when I started my role with Senator Yaw about three years ago, one of the first people I met in Lycoming County was Mike in his office. And it was then that I learned exactly the difference that he's making in the lives of residents here in this county, and as the judge said, beyond. So on behalf of that, never forget the change that you've made and the difference you've made in the lives of everyone. Congratulations.
Thank you, Matt. So much. Yes, Representative from Representative, from Representative Flick's office, Carrie Pauling.
Hi, Carrie Pauling, from Representative Flick's office. He also is sorry that he couldn't be here today, so I'm here in on his behalf just to also thank you. He, when I asked him what he thought about you, humble hero is what he said. He just really has deep respect for you, and I won't echo all the other thanks, but very deep and personal thank you. So also look forward to seeing you around.
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you for popping up. I didn't see you back there. Thank you so much. And another special guest here, Howard Wilt, ninety-six-year-old Korean veteran. Thank you for being here. Would you like to say anything? Because I know you're very close friends with Mike. Worked very closely with him.
Morning. It is a privilege to have an opportunity to congratulate Michael on his retirement. And for all the things he's done for the county and for the veterans of this area, it's a there is a man that sets an example. He brings character to everything he does. I have been blessed with the opportunity to work with Mike on several occasions. One time, I remember I had been elected President of the Veterans Council, and Mike had like every other job that he'd do over and over and over, he was treasurer of the Veterans Council. And it just reached a point where I guess it was starting to get bear down on him a little bit, and he decided he was going to run for treasurer again that year. Well, I knew the character of Mike was, having worked with him before. And we had a mutual friend. He knows who I'm talking about without even mentioning the name and name. Mutual friend in Paul Winter, who was the National Guard, who retired from the National Guard as an honorary general. And he was also the backbone in starting a memorial up in Memorial Park for First World War veterans. But he knew, he knew the character that Mike was, and wanted the council to keep on moving smoothly. And I called him one day on the phone, I said, "Paul Winter's, Mike has decided not to run for treasurer again." And knowing full well what I was doing, I was backhandedly asking him to talk to Mike. And he did. A couple of days later, Mike called me on the phone and said, "Well, he said I'm going to run again." And that was, that was the greatest thing I could have heard at that time because the council really does a good thing for the county. And Mike, in his capacity as treasurer, had made, made the organization just so much greater. And Mike, I congratulate you for everything you've done for these veterans in this county and for the county itself. And I hope you somehow learn to say no once in a while now. I know I've been through that. I, I'm not a very good not a very good example to tell somebody to say no. But congratulations, and it's been a privilege working beside you, buddy.
Thank you, Howard, and thank you so much for your service. I believe Heather, his daughter, would like to say a few words. Heather? Thank you for being here.
My dad, growing up with my dad, we've, it's always been community service. From being a little girl, we used to go and, and find patches and of every unit in the Army. And we'd go and we went to Washington, D.C. all the time. We learned about the war. We learned about America and giving back. What you probably don't know about my dad is he raised my sister and I with my stepmom, and he was, is the greatest dad. He is even better grandfather and probably an even better great-grandfather. We all know our role. But we are, my sister and I, and our children and their children are so, so incredibly proud of my dad. And I'm so glad that everybody gets to see how wonderful our dad is and the things that he's done for the community. And I just wanted everybody to know that he is a great person and a great dad, grandparent. So thank you all. We love you, Dad.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Commissioner?
Yeah, you know, it definitely speaks for, for Mike, the amount of people here, for one. But the amount that we hear as Commissioners of how the Veterans Affairs has grown for Lycoming County under, under Mike's direction, so. It's amazing how, how, how small our world is here. I, I knew his daughter for many, many years before I, before I knew Mike. You, you can look at them both and realize this definitely is his daughter. But you know what?
By the hair.
It's by the hair, yeah. You know, a great family, you know, he's obviously also done a great job raising his family as he, as he's done with the help that he's given to Lycoming County. I heard more about him in campaigning and how our Veterans Affairs here in Lycoming County far exceeds so many other departments. And it's because of his direction, so. There's, there's more than just us in the room that realize it, and, and again, can't, can't be happier for you that you're able to retire and still have your health, and hope you enjoy several years ahead. So, thanks, Mike.
I, first, I want to thank the kids who are here, because I know in July, you were probably dragged out of bed at this unreasonable hour. Mike, well, and I also learned, is your real name William? I never knew that until I just saw the agenda, so. No, Mike's been great to work with, and with all the stuff that he's done for the veterans, whenever we have to deal with him, he is, he's been wonderful. I think Jamie Flick's term of humble hero is, is perfect, because whenever we knew Mike was involved, we knew it was going to be done well. And whenever we knew we had to deal with him, it was, it was easy. So, and, and, you know, not everyone, especially people of positions of authority, sometimes they are, are not as humble as Mike is, and so we appreciate that. When the email came through that he was going to retire, I think I responded and said, "No." He, he came because everyone's here to celebrate. I'm not sure this is the celebrate. I can understand why he's celebrating. I'm not sure why we're celebrating, because the county's losing a great, a great advocate and asset. We will miss you. But thank you for all that you've done.
A few things come to my mind. Earship, dedication, respect. You're a quiet leader. You don't want attention. Just get the job done. You're very humble, like Representative Flick said. Dedication. The textbook dedication. And respect, as we see everybody here today. You've taught that respect. Thank you for your service. You're a dear friend. We'll miss you. I've got to know you over the years, and you're always there. I know you're like that in regular life. Everybody needs something. You're there to help. That's a testament to your character. So we thank you so much. We'd like to get a picture with, with the citation, like to give to you, and then leave downstairs. Sit downstairs, Mary Rose?
Yep. Second floor.
Second floor? Go down and greet you later on and and shake your hand, give you a hug, and thank you. And please don't be a stranger. I'm looking for you. And thank you so much. We're going to dearly miss you. If you'd like to come up and say anything.
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I really am overwhelmed by this. Thank you, Judge Butts, for your comments. And the representatives from our local representative's office, thank you. And mostly thank you to the Board of Commissioners. County doesn't run without you. And the office is, I've got a great staff. And couldn't have done what we do for our veterans in this county without the support of the Commissioners. And you've been tremendously supportive during my time in office here. I want to thank you. I, I would like to just follow up with a little side note on Howard's story of bringing me back. And he contacted my good friend and mentor, Paul Winter. And Paul Winter, I don't know how many people know or remember Paul Winter. He was a World War II hero. He was an officer in World War II with the Twenty-Eighth Division, and they proudly marched into Paris. If you see the big picture of them marching down the Champs-Élysées, and the Arc de Triomphe is in the background, and, and Paul would say, "Gentlemen, that was not a parade. That was a tactical maneuver. We had to get from one side of Paris to the other, and that was the most efficient way to do it." And he would go off and, and on. But so Howard did. He contacted Paul Winter, and, and Paul Winter bought me off with a cheeseburger and a Coke at Denny's, at Denny's. So that was a little side note to Howard's story. But again, I want to thank everybody, and been supportive, got a great office, Keely Hitchens, Jeff Hamilton, Natalie Stepi. Couldn't have a better staff. And they're going to carry on here in the office. And of course, my family. And I couldn't not. I mean, yeah, I've been, I go to meetings and I'm away from the house and, and stuff like that, and they've been supportive all my, my career. So I can't say enough, and I'm pleased to have my wife and daughters here, are here, and some of my grandchildren and great-grandchildren. But I want to thank you again. Thank you all for the honor.
Thank you.
It's an honor to serve the county.
So what if we get you a cheeseburger? We'll even get you fries after this.
What great people, what, what great veterans I have had the honor to meet over the years and to listen to them tell their stories. And being in the, in that office is great. Sometimes you open up, you have a veteran, and they'll open up with you. They've never talked to, about their, maybe nobody's ever asked them. But you have that camaraderie, a veterans' office that they can come to and ask them, "What did you do during, when you're in the service?" Whether they were in the war or not, they were a mechanic in Germany in the post-war era. They're just honored to, to tell you, "Hey, yeah. I turned wrenches in Germany on M60 tanks." And nobody ever asked me before. So that's we get that. But again, thank you very much for the honor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Yep, well, definitely second, you have tremendous staff for your attendance today. You have a wonderful department.
And I'll be around. You'll see me around. Maybe you want to. Thank you again.
Please don't, so I wonder, we'd like to get a look at any veterans. Take one second. Mr. Brady, you're a veteran. Come on in. Air Force veteran.
I was trying to hide, sir.
Air Force veteran.
No.
Almost.
Speaking of the Coast Guard birthday.
Hold the gun. Thank you. That's my precious. She's stopped down, she's like. You're only invited downstairs if you sit through the whole meeting.
And Mike, I want to know that your daughter wrote that document. Your daughter's.
We can pretty good. There should be the.
Okay, Nikki.
Good morning, Commissioners. Presented for your ratification, our invoice is due through August 6, 2025, to be paid on July 30, 2025 in the amount of $2,401,006.59, forty-seven point five seven percent out of the general fund, point two one percent out of the ARPA grant, twenty-nine point oh six percent out of other grants, twenty-one point oh two percent out of RMS, and two point one three out of escrow.
Okay, so your motion is accepted. Make a motion. I'll second it. Make questions or comments. All favor side?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, moving forward, information items. Do you want me to address? That's okay. Elected officials personnel actions. First one is in the Register and Recorders Office. Michelle Cunningham, Clerk four, five, full-time, seventeen dollars and sixty four cents per hour. Seventy-five hours per pay period. Anticipated start date is August eleventh, twenty twenty five. Also in the Sheriff's Office, Carl Finery, Deputy Sheriff, First Class, DS, full-time, twenty six dollars and seventy six, three cents per hour, eighty hours per pay period, effective date July sixth, twenty twenty five.
Okay, thank you.
Moving forward to personnel actions. Approve the following personnel actions as conditional offers of employment, subject to the successful completion of a background check and all other employment conditions as outlined in Attachment A. We have two in facilities management, Elwood Hoover, Maintenance Three, Eight, full-time, twenty-two dollars, point nine four five, one oh four per hour. Seventy-five hours per pay period, effective date August third, twenty twenty five. And in the Domestic Relations Office, Kimberly Lewis, Locate Specialist Four, full-time, fifteen dollars, point one six two per hour. Seventy-five hours per pay period, anticipated start date, August eleventh, twenty twenty five.
Okay, is your motion accepted, personal actions? I'll make the motion.
I'll second. On your side?
Aye.
All right, moving forward to action items. Gary?
Yeah, hi. Action item five point one is vote to approve the agreement with Honey Dipper's portable toilet. This is for a porta potty that we could put over by a unicor building, at least temporarily. Right now, there's nothing anywhere even close for the guys working over there to use the restroom.
Okay, is your motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion. I'll second if they have to go to the bathroom.
All right, action item five point two is voted through the change order with Verizon Connect. In one of our previous meetings, we talked about the cameras a little bit. Previous years, we've, we've had cameras in like everything down here, including heavy equipment. In order to save some money, we, we thought maybe we'd stick with the cameras in the vehicles that are out on the road on a daily basis. And often, rather than the ones that are really among never leased sites and hardly ever. So with that, we have some of the cameras removed and some of the stuff that we didn't think was important. And that's going to save us roughly nine hundred and twenty-four dollars a month with the changes we're making.
That's great. That's great, Gary. It's very significant. So thank you.
Thank you.
Motion accept? I'll make the motion. I'll second. On your side?
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
Great, thanks. Thank you.
All right, next is Beth Baylor. Oh, well, Hutch, actually, because that's on.
Good morning. She apologizes. She's been covering night with the new tag conversion. I heard a beat there.
No, you're good.
Okay, someone else disconnected. First up is a agreement with United Tower Systems in the amount of six thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars. This is the UPS backups at the tower site. This is a one-year contract because we're discontinuing them at the tower site. And it is an approved budget item.
Okay, motion accept? I'll make the motion. I'll second. On your side?
Aye.
Next up, a mirror agreement. This is also with UPS, United Tower. This will be for the nine-one-one center and the backup center. This is for the amount of nine thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. The first two years with a subject of five percent increase in the third year. We will be keeping these here at these sites, and it is a approved budget item.
Any motion to accept? I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
On your side?
Aye.
And last up is a no expenditure agreement with Constable Zachary Black, allowing him access to the Public Safety Radio Network.
Motion accept? I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
On your side?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Adrian. She's on the call.
Adrian, are you on there?
Nope.
Would you like me to?
Please, yeah.
Go through with that?
Thank you.
Sure. Vote to approve the agreement with Andrea Pelusi Esquire. This is an approved contract, and this is for legal representation to renew that we do. And I don't know, I believe this might be for conflicts. Let me just double check. I'm not sure. No, criminal delinquency, termination of parental rights and protection from abuse cases is this one. Rates ninety dollars per hour.
Okay, and it is approved budget item for twenty twenty five. Motion accept? I'll make the motion. I'll second. On your side?
Aye.
All right, five point seven is Chuck.
Hi, Chuck.
Morning.
Morning, buddy.
Good morning.
This is just an amendment to the MOPC agreement already in place. It, actually, the pricing is a little different than what's on here. It's thirty-five, thirty-five thousand, two eighty-seven, sixty-two. That's part of the LSA grant that we were able to secure for three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars for equipment for the corner buildings. So we just need the amendment to make that purchase and make the change to the agreement.
Just to clarify for, this is for the third sink?
Yes, this is for the autopsy sink.
Thirty-five thousand, two eighty-
Two eighty-seven, sixty-two cents is the correct number.
Motion? I'll make the motion. I'll second. On your side?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Kelsey has five point eight through five point ten.
Morning, Kelsey.
Good morning, Commissioners. So my first item is five point eight. It's change order number two with shiloh paving. Just to extend their timeline through December first of this year.
Okay, motion accept? I'll make the motion. I'll second. On your side?
Aye.
Five point nine is change order number three with shiloh paving in the amount of eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty cents. And that will still be covered by the amounts that we had in the match and the grant. And that's due to needing some additional materials that were not outlined in the original plans.
Motion accept? I'll make the motion. I'll second. On your side?
Aye.
Five point ten is change order number one with Coppel water infrastructure and services. This extends their contract with us through December fifteenth, twenty twenty five.
Motion accept?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
I'll second. On her side?
Aye.
Kelsey, we want to thank you for your work that you've helped getting the CDA grant through and the work started on the levy.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Commissioners.
Thank you.
All right, the next, yep, the next are all my items. So five point eleven, it's vote to approve resolution twenty twenty five seventeen, authorizing a match for the Susquehanna River Block Extension Trail Development Project to the CFA in the amount of two million dollars. So we've secured over two point seven million thus far. And we also hope that with two additional grants that we're submitting, that will actually draw down from that two million dollar match. So we're hopeful that that won't actually be the county's portion that will continue to dwindle that and lessen that financial burden.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, motion, approve the resolution twenty-five, twenty twenty five seventeen. I'll make the motion. I'll second. On your side?
Aye.
And the next item, five point twelve, vote to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash eighteen. This is for the auction of surplus equipment, which was estimated, which has an estimated value in excess of a thousand dollars. This is just part of our quarterly bid that I do for all our surplus equipment that we have as part of replacements and rotation.
Okay. Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash eighteen. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
On your side?
Aye.
The next item, five point thirteen, vote to ratify the change order for Casa Excavating LLC for the Emergency Watership Protection Project. This one is particular to L Y C twenty-four, zero, one, ten, in the amount of eight thousand, five hundred dollars. When they went in to start to do that work, they noticed that what they had proposed for the stream bank stabilization need to be extended. So as a result, that's why they're doing the change order.
So?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Do I?
Aye.
And five point fourteen, vote to ratify the auction agreement, Freely Auction Incorporated. This is for services that are going to be provided at the farm for some of the tractors and our machinery that's out there. And that'll be taking place here on the thirteenth of August.
Is there an auction out here tonight?
That's what I was thinking.
I don't know. This, this is saying the thirteenth, so now I'm confused a little bit, actually, because I, when I had talked earlier with Kim, I was under the impression this week. Yeah, which is hence why we had to ratify it and get it signed. So, so I'm not sure.
Uh, motion accept?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
I'll second. On your side?
Aye.
And five point fifteen, vote to approve the agreement with Lawrence Gazzardi, M.D. This is for Public Defender for Expert Toxicology Services for the Keith Ritz case. It's not an approved budget item, but we have worked with Nicole in order to move funds within that budget category, so it's covered.
Okay. Motion, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Side?
Aye.
And then the last item I have for you, five point sixteen, is vote to approve the demonstration electronic monitoring agreement with B I Incorporated. This is for electronic monitoring services as it relates to the adult probation office.
How are they going to cover?
They have funds as well. We've been working with them. So that's been the beauty about having these quarterlies is that we're able to pull from not even necessarily their own department, from other departments where there's leftover funds and put it where it needs to be, where there's shortfalls.
Okay. Motion accept? I'll make the motion. I'll second. On your side?
Aye.
Commissioner comment?
Yeah, I, I wanted to make a quick comment because sometimes, sometimes I forget some of the things I say. I wanted to kind of apologize to Commissioner Metzger. Last week, we talked about the levy system and everything, and I made the comment that Commissioner Masina and I, when we, when we were in the campaign process, the levy was something we heard over and over and over and over again. This thing's ten years old. What do you guys, what are you guys going to do when you get in there? And I kind of neglected Commissioner Metzger in the comments last week, so I wanted to rectify that a little bit because he too sat there and said to the two of us when we, you know, day one in office, what are we going to do? Because we got to get this thing done or we're all going to be hung out to dry by the, by the constituents. So it is a continued team and a continued effort. He did, as, as noted, thank Kelsey because Kelsey's been such a dramatic change as we made changes in our operational situation here at the county, and that has moved that levy system leap years ahead of where we were and, but I don't leave him out of that mix. And I realized afterwards, I kind of, kind of acted like maybe it was just being marketed, and it's, it's not. It, he definitely too was beat up by residents, and it was something that needed to be done. And we're all very proud that we've got that moving in the right direction.
It's been a team effort. The Army, of course, been, you know, they've had changes down there. They are great in the new curls. Been fantastic. Representative Ham, there's a user's office, there's a, Representative Musser. There's times that, that PDA grant got held up. And I'd make phone calls to James May, to Nate Kursick, and they pull over and along the highway. And they, they'd say, we'll take care of it. Let me take notes. And within a day or two, they were back to us. It's back on track. And so they've all been instrumental. We reached out to Senator Fetterman, Senator Formick's office. They've been helpful. So it's been a team effort. City, Willstock, South Weyersport. They've had some changes over to city. They have a great team working on it now. So it's a team effort. And we're running in the right direction. And now that we have the shovel on the ground, things are progressing. It's promising.
Yes.
And go back to Congressman Keller. He got an eight million dollar grant. That was one of the last things he did from the floor. He actually called me from the floor of the House. And right after it happened, he got together with Senator Casey. They combined their monies. And he said, I normally don't do this, but Weyersport is very dear to my heart. And I want you to know that we're doing this, going forward with this eight million dollars. And he called, he called me right away from the floor. I could hear the people in the background, and he was so excited about bringing this to Weyersport, Lakeview County. Thanked him. And so, and that goes back a few years, but he started that process and had eight million dollars to come to the city. So yeah, they were working hard to help us and getting things across the finish line, so.
A lot, a lot of efforts have gone into that. And it is a, you know, it's a team with our, our, our other local, you know, such as Representative Ham, Representative Flick's office, Senator Yaw's office, that, that everybody's working together as a team to get that, that certified. So we can get it back to correct ownership and moving forward, hopefully done properly on a, on an annual basis rather than than kicking a can and having thirty years where the repairs needed to be done in a, in a short time. Also, exciting week at, in, in Lakeview County. We were able to attend quite a few different functions. The Chick-fil-A opens today. I, I wouldn't even want to be on Main Street right now to see what that was like. But very exciting for the people of, of our community to be able to now get to a Chick-fil-A without having to drive somewhere. So I think it's a wonderful day for all, everybody that loves Chick-fil-A. So that's, that's awesome. We also were able to be at an opening for UPMC taking over the Med Express down in Willstock Township. You know, again, a, a local community hospital that, that supports our region to be able to grow into that area as well, to continue to give us quality service for, for healthcare in our area. And Fire Tree had an expansion. So there's just so many good things happening in Lakeview County. I, you know, I, I, I say it almost every week here, we're, we're proud to be part of that. We're not the drivers, but we, we hope that we're facilitating and helping as, as best we can to allow continued economic development. And I think we're on a roll. And I think that in the next five to ten years, Lakeview County is going to see a huge growth in prosperity of an economic development and new housing, new employment, because as these other companies, smaller companies come in, then the larger companies will follow. I was at a meeting the other evening. One of our constituents talked, you know, deeply about how do we get those other large companies to show up here? And, you know, I hate to say, you know, wait and see, but I think some of that is a wait and see. As they see that Lakeview County is progressing and, and in my other career, I, I travel a lot of Pennsylvania. You're not seeing the growth that you're seeing in Lakeview County and other areas of this state. So I am just thrilled that we're where we are.
It's exciting to be at Fire Tree yesterday, featured this morning in the sunset. And you know that they're going to double their, their childcare facility, just so needed. Because a lot of parents have to stay home because they can't find childcare, child care. So one parent's working and the other one's staying home, and they both would like to work if possible. So that's going to help there. You know, it's, there's a dish bowl. Programming there for teenagers and seniors. So it's a win-win for, for the county and the city. And we're so blessed to have Fire Tree in our area. And great work that they do. Very exciting week.
Yeah, I don't really have anything. You guys said, wow, the growth is good. You know, every time the census comes out, people complain, not complain, but they comment on, we're losing population, we're losing population. These are the things we have to do to combat that, not just in Lakeview County, but in our entire region. Yeah, yesterday was really, to, to go to, two ribbon cuttings and a groundbreaking is a, is a pretty good day, especially in July. Because it's not really, you wouldn't think July would be that time. It's, it's kind of slower. It's vacation time, but we're moving. We got a lot of things going on. We had the, the one at the lumberyard last week, so things are really going, they're going well. I, I think Mark said it very well.
Okay, public comment? Yes, it's great here. Out here, please. Thank you for being here. And thank you for your service. Yeah.
I didn't come up because I knew what they'd say about Air Force. Just a quick little side, I found that if somebody tells you they're in the military, it's a ninety-eight percent guarantee they mean Army. And then everybody else tells you who they were. It's kind of funny. Steve Brady, sixteen fourteen Lake Road, up in Trout Run, Gamble Township. Just wanted to talk to you all briefly about the curvation center and what we do. We are a five oh one C three not-for-profit sitting between Bullfrog and Woodlands Bank in the back of the parking lot there. Visibly, we're a coworking space. You come in, you pay seventeen dollars for the day, you pay a hundred and fifty a month, three hundred dollars for, for an office, a hundred and fifty- 150 to use it for the month, 24/7 access. But even more importantly, we've been working with small businesses now for eight years, starting tomorrow. Tomorrow's our birthday. And seems, always happens on a first Friday too, which is kind of weird. But we're really excited about the opportunities we have ahead of us, but unfortunately, we all know the budget constraints and the price, the crisis that we're having. Joe, about a state budget not getting passed. And unfortunately for us, we live or die on some of the grant money that we get. And so, we're in the middle right now of a fundraising campaign till noon tomorrow. And we're looking for donations so we can get a $5,000 match from a business owner who was helped by the Curation Center. I know you all don't have any money in the county budget. I would ask any of you. Yeah, might even like my photographs. If someone gives $250 or more, Brady Photography will be giving them one of my photographs off of BradyPhotos.com, their choice, up to a 16 by 20. I think I put, if you do 350 or more, you can get up to a 24 by 36 or 20 by 30, if you really want to go big or go home. I'm not sure if you've seen my work. I like it. I mean, you will. I like my work. But we're looking to get to that $5,000 threshold. We were almost at the halfway point this morning. I think we've just crossed the halfway threshold, and we're looking at now 25 hours until I have to have that money in place. So, if any of you would be interested in supporting CurationCenter.org/donate, I'm looking for personal donations. I'm not necessarily looking for money from county, but maybe returns.
Yeah. Steve, we thank you for, we've done for small businesses. There's no doubt about it. It's been very important in our area. Appreciate it.
And if I could add one more thing, but you're all we're talking about, as you bring in Bass Pro Shop and all the things that come along with it, there's a lot of other things that happen around bigger businesses when they come in. We're here for the micro business. We're here for the mom and pops. We're here for the people that start up a little business. And what happens a lot of times is, I don't know if any of you have had those businesses, you're so busy working in your business, you don't know how to work on your business. And a lot of them take their passion and turn it into a business, but they don't know how to do business. That's never been their passion. And so, we're here to come alongside and see that they be successful, to help them be the success that they can be while they live the life they want to do, the things that they love. So, that's what we have as our mission. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
How is, before you run away, how is, like, since you, you've been around eight years, right?
It's in the match, yeah.
So, you were pre-COVID, and then you're post-COVID. How has that affected? So, which, I say that because so much of what we've seen of the workforce has now gone home, basically.
And so, a couple of things. One, we had master classes. The state hub's funded that. We were doing one in Danville, but we had a photography group from Sunbury, Sandler's Photography Studio, been around over 100 years, not the original owner. And after COVID, so that was in October, November of 2019, after COVID, like, we got a testimonial that said, you prepared us for COVID before we knew it was coming. We would not have survived had we not gone through what you provided in the masterclass. But during COVID, Scott remembers, we reached out, we reached out to 350, 400 businesses directly. When other support organizations said, visit our website if you need help, fill out a form, and we'll get back to you, we were calling. I had a team that just kept calling every day. We called businesses and say, where are you? What do you need? And to our surprise, we heard, think I'm doing okay, but the business next door, can you call them? They need help. And that was really kind of cool for me to hear the, the businesses supporting businesses. We also did a survey. I don't know if Scott, if you remember, we provided you all with the survey from all of that to let you know where businesses were hurting the most during COVID. Surprised to no one, really, women-owned and minority-owned businesses were hardest hit, because they tend to be the ones that have the least amount of cash. Let's add the Curation Center now to that stack. Since then, we are seeing more people working from home, and we're beginning to see more people using the Curation Center space as their home away from home, because you can only do so much in your pajamas, and then you kind of want to get out, you kind of want to get away from the dogs and kids, especially in the summer. And so, we're seeing more growth there, but we're also seeing... Okay, so, how many of you bought soap from one of these new soap businesses that came up during COVID? Everybody started making soap and raising chickens. Yeah, right. I mean, and I have my favorites, Rose Valley Naturals, they were there before COVID, and I went through our masterclass before COVID. Sidoor Soaps, I have my own favorites in town here, but so many soap businesses and candle businesses started. And now, we're seeing a winnowing out as, you can't sustain that much. I have, my wife tells me I have too much soap in the house. But I swear, I do wash, too. So, we're, we're helping those businesses try to figure out, how do you grow your business? It's something that's become very competitive and a very niche craft sort of way. And we've also created with the help from EQT, a creatives masterclass. So, the people who are true creatives or artists, whether it's photography, or it's soap, or it's dog biscuits, or it's jewelry, clay, pottery, those sorts of things, we've created a masterclass for those people who think more left-brained. Is it right, right, right-brained? Think more right-brained. I can't even say it. And they don't understand necessarily, they can't immediately grasp the concepts of business, because they're very artistic over on this side and not as much on this side. And the other thing we're doing is leaning heavily into AI. There's a phone number you can call to talk to polite Steve. I mean, I won't hang up on you if you call that number. I will hang up on you. But polite Steve will talk you through your business, answer questions, help you with everything we have in our curriculum, has been put in the database for that. And so, if you call that number, and we got a couple of them, targeting creatives or regular small business owners and such, you can ask your question, ask me questions, and my virtual voice will answer those questions. And we do, I get a transcript, so I can always reach back out and I tell you that upfront. We also have some custom GPTs to use some of our tools that are very powerful, but people kind of have a hard time wrapping their head around the customer segmentation matrix. So, this not only steps you through it, it builds out the matrix and helps you answer questions like, I do this, here's my pricing, how does this compare to the nationwide market? How does this compare to others in the region? And because you're leveraging the AI piece of it, it can help with the tools that we already had in place. So, we've come up with some pretty powerful stuff, all of which are provided, much of which is provided absolutely for free. Have to mention our YouTube channel. Like and subscribe. Thanks for asking.
Thank you, Steve. Anybody else?